One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to pass on item two on the agenda and go right to visitors and public comments. Mr. Schwartz?
Good evening. Lee Schwartz, Sunset View Drive, and one of the Ways and Means Committee. Just a couple of quick items. Later you have the police regionalization listed on the agenda. Will we be talking about the fact that Doylestown Borough sending that back out for a new cost study?
No. We're going to be talking about, well, it's on the agenda to discuss our new resolution for the Department of Community Economic Development to do another study with five municipalities instead of the previous four.
Okay.
And that's not a cost to us.
I understood it was no cost, but, okay, good. And I guess the other thing is, as a member of the Ways and Means Committee, earlier in the season I invited everybody to come to our meetings. We have them every month. They're on the last Thursday of the month at 7:00.
Right, Wednesday.
We're near crunch time, so I'm inviting everybody again, especially the people that were upset about what happened last year. So, haven't seen anybody yet, please come join us. The next one's on the 28th, 7:00. And get down and find out what's going on. Don't come out later after everything's done and say, geez, you didn't like what happened. But it's important to be there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's the last Wednesday of every month, not Thursday.
I said Thursday.
No.
No.
Okay.
That was to confuse us.
Any other comment? Mr. Bingley?
James Bingley-Furlong. I know the supervisors are the people that are in charge of changing zoning, okay. I would have talked to quite a few people in my neighborhood, and I think all of us are pretty much in agreement that the Grasso track would be served much better being R1. I would like to put it by you supervisors. We have changed zoning before. We changed zoning across the street on a piece of property that was an approved subdivision. And after Mr. Grasso not showing up and canceling at a meeting at 2:52, I believe it was, wasn't it, Stephanie?
Close enough.
That's what was on the memo.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Last Monday night. I would like to hear what you supervisors or legally, or can we do it?
You can certainly do it. However, anyone that submitted a plan before it's approved, that plan has vested rights. So you can't divest someone of their rights when they filed a plan by changing the zoning. So going forward, if that plan for some reason failed to secure either approval from the board or court approval, then whoever came in with a new application would have to live with a new zoning classification.
Has it formally been sent into the township?
There is a preliminary plan that's been submitted, yes.
Okay. So the clock has sorted to run?
Yes, it has.
That's why there was a planning commission meeting. That clock did begin to run. So what I'm saying is if you change the zoning, it would apply to any new applications, not to an existing application.
Okay.
How long does that have to run?
Well, it has to run until some action or some decision is made. And I assume, I'm not going to prejudge what that might be. In other words, if the supervisors approve the application, then it would have all the rights of an approved plan. If the township supervisors declined to approve the plan and went to court during the entire time it was litigated, it would have the same rights. And if the court concluded that the supervisors were correct, then anybody new coming in would submit under the new ordinance. If the court concluded supervisors were wrong, they would have the right to proceed with that plan.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question then, just based on Mr. Bingley's question. Would it make sense to try to be proactive? And what would be the risk for the supervisors or the township if we were inclined to consider R1, changing that zoning to R1 on the chance that the other plan doesn't go through for whatever reason or they withdraw it?
Well, I guess the risk you run, and I say risk in a sense that, I don't mean it in a physical sense, but sometimes developers who don't believe they get a fair treatment or a fair result from an application file civil rights actions in federal court on the premise that the township prejudged the matter or acted inappropriately and whatever. And one of the pits of evidence would obviously be that you changed the zoning while the application was pending. So I'm just, I'm not saying they're going to do that. I'm not saying that is dispositive of a ill will, but I'm just saying that would be something that would be brought up during the course of any such proceeding.
Thank you. Okay. Any other visitor, public comment?
Good evening. My name is Linda Thomas. I'm the Director of Services at A Woman's Place. As a representative for the agency, we would like to present Chief White and the Doylestown Police, Doylestown Township Police Department with this recognition and appreciation for their service, bravery, and commitment to the safety of the public. And this is on behalf of all the victims we work with also.
Thank you.
Very much a surprise. I didn't set that up and I had no idea that was coming. I know I'm getting down to the end of the line with about six months left in my 39 years as a police officer, but A Woman's Place serves the community in ways that people have no idea. They are an outstanding organization. And in fact, they're having a fundraiser on October 1st in our park for a 5K race. And I was assisting their volunteers or their employees yesterday in setting up the 5K race. So if you have something that you want to do for fun, come on out and run in the park. You can have the cops chase you because I'm in it. I'm slow. I'll be at the back. And if I catch you, I don't arrest you. I just pat you on the back because you got behind the word. Sounds very good. Thank you very much.
And A Woman's Place 35-year anniversary celebration is on October 14th.
Indeed.
Got you covered. Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you. Congratulations to you.
It's a surprise.
Any other comments? Our next meeting is October 4th, 2011. The Worldwide Day of Place, September 24th here. It's in Central Park from 11:00 to 3:00. Rain date is September 25th. Our community yard sale, which used to be at Central Park, is October 1st. Rain date, October 2nd. It's going to be at Delaware Valley College, excuse me, Delaware Valley Market. And it goes from 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Is that going to stop soon?
Guess it did.
Okay. The Halloween is October 22nd, 2011. Rain date, October 23rd, 10:00 a.m. to 12:30. That's in Central Park. And the leaf and yard waste recycling for Doylestown Township, our residents only, is in Central Park, October 15th, November 12th, and December 10th. And everyone, please check your, check our website. All these dates will be repeated on the website. Next item on the agenda, looking for approval for the minutes of the regular meeting of August 16th.
Note for approval.
Comments, questions, concerns?
I just had one thing that I wanted to add. On page four, second paragraph, after the last sentence, I noted that since the, it seems that individuals were not taking responsibility for obeying the traffic symbols by the Lower State Road near Castle Valley Bridge, that I wanted to have more police enforcement. That's all I have on that. Thank you.
Can you tell me where that is again, on page four?
Page four, second paragraph, at the end.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
It is there. I just wanted to put that in after the last sentence.
Yep. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
On page three, on the motion, Mr. Scarborough's motion in the middle for two-hill, open space, says that the motion was to approve a second appraisal be performed to the property located on 3136 Bristol Road.
I can't hear you with your hand on your mouth.
It was, it says that it was to approve the second appraisal on 3136 Bristol Road.
Okay.
Is that?
That's not the location, I don't think.
No, I think it's Sandy Ridge Road.
Two-hill property, which is on Sandy Ridge. So the motion could reflect.
Duly noted for correction. Anything else? All in favor of the minutes with those two changes?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. 5-0. Correspondence regarding the South Woodridge Drive traffic concerns? Chief, do you want to address this at this point?
Well, we, the board received a petition signed by numerous residents out there on South Woodridge. In fact, I had spoken to the primary family that signed the petition back in May. They're concerned about the speed of vehicles in their area. And what we did is between May 10th and May 17th, we put a speed timer out there. And it is startling to a certain extent that in that seven-day period, 3,756 vehicles were timed through that area. It's averaging over 600 vehicles a day. One of the things in my career here, when they say what's the biggest change, and some of the biggest changes in the township, and it is that when I first came here, every house had one car, possibly two. Now every house has three and four, possibly five cars. And if you think about going out to the grocery store and coming back, going out to the cleaners and coming back, going to the school and coming back, run your kids to the soccer game and coming back, and that's how you end up getting so many trips. It's not that there's 3,756 vehicles going down Woodridge. It's probably a lot of the neighbors making multiple trips up and down the roadway. The average speed was 29 miles per hour in a 25 mile an hour zone. As the people that have been here for a long time will know, a couple of different things. Number one, devices that we can use, the vehicle code requires us that we cannot enforce the speed limit until it's 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. So we cannot issue a citation until it would be 35 miles an hour. And that's a hindrance. On a side note, if we were able to use radar, where Pennsylvania's the only state in the nation that doesn't permit their municipal police to use radar, which is disgraceful, that we would only be 5 miles an hour over the speed limit. So as these bills for the use of radar language in the Transportation Committee, we should put pressure on our representatives and our senator to vote them out of committee and get us the tools that we need to do it. Woodridge is not unlike many of the streets throughout our jurisdiction. If you remember, we had Sugar Bottom Road, and there were 18,000 vehicles down there in a short time period. And it's startling to know that number. Our roads, or most of the roads throughout Southeastern Pennsylvania, were never built to take the volume of the traffic that's out there, nor the speed of the vehicles out there. We have identified two primary areas in the township to use as almost beta sites to determine with reducing the speed limit from 35 to 25 and having enforcement, whether that can change the, change the behavior of the drivers to slow the vehicles down. And that's on Sowerman Road and on Turk Road. And we had not been able to use that as a, as a traffic calming measure because our, our traffic engineer had indicated that there were other certain elements of the speed study that need to be met before you could reduce it. But we have, in the last eight to nine months, we have been informed that yes, in fact, the first step in traffic calming should always be the reduction of speed and to see within a six to 12-month period whether there is a change of behavior of the drivers. And I believe that you will find, if we brought the statistical information out, that there is some modified behavior on both Sowerman Road and Turk Road. We will continue to do that out there. We will continue to schedule enforcement details out on South Woodridge, but if the average speed is 29 miles an hour, we can't enforce the speed limit until it's 35 miles an hour. So it's somewhat chasing our tail. We have the chairman of our Traffic Advisory Committee here, and he could speak to it, or Cynthia that was here. But there is a recommendation, Lieutenant Logan has indicated, that a very effective means for us is being able not only to get the actual speeds and the number of vehicles that are on roadways, but to have devices that the operators will actually see that will show the speed limit. And in front of the board, there is a recommendation to use some of the money in the capital funds that were assigned for traffic calming measures and studies and all, that we would buy several of these devices. So we have been concentrating, as I said, on several specific areas, but there are many areas. We have 125 miles of roadway dick, or how many, it's about 75 to 80 township miles.
76.
76 miles of township roadway. There are many other areas that have, that have the same problem, that the speed and volume of the vehicles is just not enough. And I would, I would ask possibly Cynthia to discuss it and maybe make a motion that we, that the board spends some of the money that's in that capital account.
If, if it would be okay to deal with it at this time?
Yeah, sure.
Or do you want to deal with it a little bit later on the topic? One of the things, the Traffic Committee has worked very hard to look at a lot of these areas. And one of the things that had come up, especially with, with Sowerman and Turk, was the reduction in speed as being the first step in the traffic calming. And we also, we also have Carol Sugars from our committee here as well, and Joe O'Malley as well from our committee. So everyone has worked very hard to kind of see what the best steps are in order to protect our residents, especially from speeding. So one of the first steps, as the chief was saying, is to increase the fact that we could have more of these speed monitoring panels, because we've seen in the first study that the reduction of speed is starting to move people to starting obeying what they should have been obeying all along. We only have one, is that chief? We only have?
Well, we have a flashing board.
We have a flashing board, but we don't have a?
We have a device that we can monitor, we can mount that monitors the speed and the number of vehicles, the volume of the vehicles.
Right.
But one of the other effective means is we put them, we can put them in tandem. We have a large board that actually shows the speed of the vehicles, and that's fairly effective. I would need, I believe we need another one, and that's one of the recommendations.
Right. And that was, the recommendation of the committee was to utilize some of the money from the traffic calming capital budget that is in this year's budget to go to purchase at least two, I believe it was at least two of the speed monitoring devices, so that we can then kind of expand these safety measures into other communities, like on Woodridge, taking a look, making sure we can have those things up there. Because the more education that's out there, the better it is at reducing the speeds and making it safe, so that we can, you know, walk our kids on the street. The community of Woodridge does not have sidewalks, but that doesn't mean that you shouldn't be able to walk on the road with your kid, or with a dog, or just by yourself, and not fear that you're going to be run over by one of your neighbors, or a school bus, or something along those lines. So I'd like to put that as a motion to the rest of the group at this time.
What would the cost of one of these devices cost?
There is, there is a memo in front of the board. Jmar Technologies, there's a radar recorder kit with or without a laptop that would be $39.95 or $34.
Without a laptop?
Without the laptop.
And then there's a USB.
And there's the Traffic Solutions, the Shield, the 12-inch display that actually shows the speed for $4,890. And if you're going to do two of them, I would, I would do one of the radar recorder kits. You could do it without a laptop. We could hook up a laptop that we have, and, and the other, the Shield itself, the display board, and I would, I would ask.
We have $50,000 set aside for studies and potential traffic calming improvements. And we feel that this is, the committee felt that this was one of the first steps.
That's in the budget, $50,000?
Yes.
I have a question about the motion. Or do you want to second, first?
I have a question about the motion, first. But you go right ahead.
Okay. Did someone second already?
I don't know what the motion is, because just technically speaking, is your motion for the recommendation, or is your motion for two speed displays? The motion is to be authorized to purchase two of the, or I guess if the chief is doing one of the Jmar Technologies and one of the All Traffic Solutions from the $50,000 traffic calming budget. Right. Okay. So one speed display and then the radar. That's correct. Okay. And that, just so that people understand, that this is not precluding other types of traffic calming measures that may come up, that we, the committee may feel would work in other neighborhoods, or even in these similar neighborhoods. If we find that maybe the speed thing is not doing it, we might want to employ some other types of traffic calming measures as well. There's a motion. I'll second that motion. Barbie, you had a question?
My question was the same, because I wasn't sure for clarity. I thought that in listening to what the chief had to say and Ms. Filo, that the chief was suggesting that the radar recorder kits would be a good place to start. But I thought that he was also asking possibly about getting one of, an additional speed board, display board. So I don't think that that was included in Cynthia's motion, or it was?
Yeah. The two, the two pieces here, there, there's one of the Jmar Technologies pieces, and- Without the laptop. $3,400. And then the 12-speed display board for $4,890. Are you saying that we would not need the laptop?
Probably not, no.
Okay. So that would be, you'd save money on that. So there's one of those, $3,400, and one at $4,890.
And you need the, you need the USB, though?
Yeah. $39.
For that, yeah.
That's the motion.
Okay.
And that's been seconded.
Okay. Gotcha. Just one.
Any other questions or comments? Calling the question? I thought there was someone in the audience that had some questions. Okay. Mr. Bingley?
I thought I understood the chief to say you wanted two boards.
That's what I thought so too, but it's clarified.
I thought he said two devices, one board and one shield.
Right. That's what my understanding is. That's what I said. One board and one shield.
One board and one shield.
Mr. Bingley?
Chief, do they both record the speed?
Yes. One, in addition to recording the speed, also is a flashing device that, that actually shows the driver what their speed is. The other one, you're not going to see.
It gets similar to the one we had on Sowerman at one point.
Yes.
Right.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Was there another comment? Yes.
Can I ask for a clarification on each of the devices?
Can you identify yourself, please?
On Jackie Hayes.
Fine.
Not attending the traffic meetings.
Okay, thank you. She lives on Turk. Thank you.
So could I ask, from my own understanding, is the radar recorder similar to the device that you're utilizing now that records the speed and the volume?
We now have, yes, we now have a recorder that we can put out that people are not going to see. And it actually determines the actual speed of the vehicles and the volume of the vehicles during a certain time period that it's out there. We, as a, a learning or an educational piece to it, we put the board out that actually shows the driver what their speed is. But the one we have now, it doesn't last that long, and it does not record the information. What we want to do, go ahead. I thought you had asked me to explain what it is.
...that as the driver's approaching it, that their speed limit is not recognized and displayed on this display, and it's this portable thing that you can move to various locations?
I need, I think you need to come to the microphone. I can't hear you all in the back of the room.
Is the board?
You need to speak into the microphone. Microphone, so everybody knows what your question is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Is the board that, I don't know what the correct term is for, but it's this portable device that records the oncoming automobile speed and flashes it?
That's the speed board, yes.
And that's what you're looking to purchase?
A more improved one is what we're looking. That was the second one that's for $4,890.
Okay. So I attended the Traffic Advisory Committee meeting, I think it was last Wednesday. And there was some brief discussion about these devices that are put up on a permanent, for instance, utility pole along the road. And just by coincidence, on Friday afternoon, I saw it at Upper State Road, I believe it is, between Om's House and Bristol. And it looks like a box that's attached to a utility pole, and it serves the same purpose of these digital display boards. And one of the comments that led to this particular item was because it could be placed in a location such as my end of Turk Road, where there are no berms to put this digital device.
The new one is a very small one. It's not, we're not looking for another speed board like we have now. We've had that for about six or seven years. And the technology then, this is like Warp Speed compared to what the old technology was. That's on a trailer. That's very hard to put out.
Right.
And we need a lot of space to put that out. This is a smaller device that's much like you're explaining.
All right. So it can be used where there's no shoulder on the side of the road?
Yes.
That was part of the plan, that we wanted to make sure on the-
Yeah. That's just what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah. It's not, it's not a speed board like we have now, no. That's, that's what we're, that was the state of the technology six or seven years ago.
And is the purchase of that, the portability of it being kept in mind?
That's why we're, that's why we're making a recommendation.
So that you could use it somewhere here or somewhere there?
Yes. That's why we're making a recommendation, that we have a second set of them. We will still use the other two devices that we have.
Right.
But we have a lot of roadway and a lot of similar complaints that you have on Turk Road, and, and other residents have in other areas, that we need to address other people's complaints.
Right. Understood. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Please come to the microphone. We've already been, the chief is going to yell at you.
Rich, Rich Herring from Sowerman Road. What was the results of the, that device that you had on Sowerman?
I don't have it in front of me. The device is that there's-
The average speed and the amount of traffic. I was just curious.
I don't have it right in front of me, but we do have.
26 miles.
That's, that's the chairman of our, our Traffic Advisory Committee.
So it worked, I guess, huh?
Well, I think we need more time. I think, I mean, I had said to several of our residents that we need six to 12 months. We need to see what the learned behavior is over a longer period of time. Hopefully it'll continue to, by, by closer to the 25 mile an hour speed limit on both roadways.
That makes a lot of sense. Thanks. One of the first people that got a ticket was my neighbor's wife.
Well, you know, it's interesting. We find, unfortunately, and, you know, most of the time, it's, we're all doing it in our own neighborhoods like that, speeding, that is. And, you know, that's, once we put that out there, we hope that everybody kind of starts to comply. Well, I have to allow an extra five minutes when I come over to the township building now that's 25 miles an hour on Turk Road myself. I knew I had, I had definitely slowed myself down. Okay, there's a motion and a second. I'm going to call the question. One more? I'm sorry, sir.
Yes, my name's Paul Weinberger. I lived on Sowerman Road. I've lived there for 53 years and have seen it turn from, it was a gravel road into now a Speedway. I understand it, and I thank the board for getting on this thing, and the police department for doing it at one end of the road. However, in my opinion, and I've watched cars daily, they do not speed at the lower, or the north end of the road. They speed at the top end because it's wide open. When they come off Edison Varlone Road, and they just fly till they hit the bottom of the hill. At the bottom of the hill, you've got to make a slight left there and go up over a little hill. And that's where they're, they're taking these speed checks at. That's not the problem. The problem is at the south end of the road.
Well, we'd like to be able to do it at many locations. We also only have a certain number of police officers to do all the public safety needs of the municipality. We have one officer assigned that this is his side job that he does this.
I understand that portion. But this is brought up, we've had speeding on that road for, I don't know how many.
We've had speeding on all our roadways for many years.
Yeah, okay.
It's a, it's a very difficult problem throughout our area.
That's true. And even five years ago, I spoke to you personally, and I asked, where possible, a three-way stop sign where Pebble Hill Drive comes down. That would calm that street down over 50 percent.
And I'll explain to you, like I explained to you five years ago, that the first thing the traffic engineer, the engineers will tell you is it's inappropriate to put a multi-way stop sign to control speed, because it becomes a much more dangerous speed reason, situation for another reason, in that people are skipping through the three and four-way stop sign because they know it's there to control speed. So you solve one problem and create another, and I wouldn't permit it then, and I'm not going to permit it now.
Well, even back then, you did say it was a good idea.
Well, it is a good idea to have some type of impact on the drivers, but you're going to create another hazardous condition. If you want us to do the timing at the top of the hill where you are, we'll do that.
Okay. That would be great. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
One other comment. This situation is not going to get any better. We got the Parkway that's going to open next year. And I guarantee there's going to be much more volume on both Sowerman and Turk because of that. When that opens, people are going to come down there, shoot out there, so they can get right on the Parkway. So it is going to increase in the next few years.
They'll get on the Parkway up by 313, and it's at Main Street by the bypass. They're not going to get-
They can go right up, they can go right down Sowerman, check up the bypass?
No, they cannot. It's a bridge there.
They can't get on there.
Yeah, they're not going to be able to.
Do you come out, go right?
No.
Right past Sabre Home?
No. That's not it. You can't get on the Parkway there. It's a bridge over New Britton Road. The only way you can get on the Parkway is to go up to the 202 bypass. The only way you can get on the parkway is to go up to the 202 bypass, enter it there, and then that becomes the parkway once you cross over.
Look there, make a left, and you're right on the, the bypass.
Hopefully, the, the residents that are very adamant about bringing several problems to our attention, and our Traffic Advisory Committee, and the Board of Supervisors has recognized traffic calming is something that we need to do. Did we do the best job that we could do in the past? Probably not, quite honestly, but I really enjoy the, the recommendations of the Traffic Advisory Committee. It's a very diverse group of people that are going to hold us to task, and that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make one more comment?
Please, Carol.
As you can see, I'm Carol Sugars. I'm the representative for the voting district number four of the Traffic Advisory Committee, and I just wanted to add to Mr. Weinberger's comments, there are, and Mr. Herron's comments, that we, the residents have expressed to me that they want assurance that the monitoring that has recently been initiated continue. Because of the lack of devices, I guess, there is one or two, is that right, Chief?
Well, there's a set that we use. Now, we just purchased another set, but as I told you before, we are going to do this for six to 12 months, so we're going to continue seeing the impact.
And that's what they want to know, that we have all the data that we need to, at the Traffic Advisory Committee, to make the decision as to whether it's working or not. I think so far, it is trending, you know, bettering and lowering the speed that the vehicles are traveling, but what they have come to see is that they want that monitoring to be done on the other end of the road, because Sowerman's kind of broke up into two different sections. So, that's why they're here tonight. And, and I just had a question with the traffic monitoring device that's been used on Turk. Is that something that you've, because you did two sites on Turk, Bamaka and what was the other roadway?
Closer up, we're checking.
North Pebble Woods? Was that the device that was then moved, or were there two that were used separately, like concurrently?
No, 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 it was moved. We only had one device that would do the?
Okay. So, yeah, so we just need the device to move from the southern end of the road, or the northern end of the road.
Well, there's a lot of township residents that are on other roadways that also want to have our attention too, so we have to be very even about the use of the devices. But the board has taken a substantial step tonight and, and has authorized the purchase of another set of devices that we can use.
Well, that's, you know, what, what this is, is in process of the study, because Sowerman was a pilot, so we just want to be thorough and not just make our decision on the one side of the road.
I don't know how many times, I don't need, know how many times I need to tell you that we're going to do this. I've told you this a number of times in the last couple of months. We're not disappearing. I'm retiring, but that doesn't mean that the enforcement is, and the monitoring is not, is going to go away.
Okay, let's move on. Calling the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I think that's five and O.
That would be my phone. I apologize.
I have nothing we won't talk about later in the agenda, Madam Chairperson.
Okay. Manager?
Me neither.
I'm sorry. Manager?
I just have, we need to set a couple of dates. First, we're, need to do our fall road inspection, and I'm suggesting perhaps October 6 in the afternoon, and then also, we'll kind of put them together, and we're thinking maybe the same day, kind of bring you out just that one time, is we have to do our first budget work session, start that process as well, which?
What day of the week that is? I'm sorry, I don't have?
It's a Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have a, oh, 4:00 PM, okay, we have a, we have a DART meeting that morning?
October 6?
On the 6th now. The DART meeting is?
The 27th, I believe.
Yeah.
In the morning, at 10:00.
Did you change?
Yep. DART meeting's 27th in the morning at 10:00.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds good, huh? Yes? Let's do both meetings at the same time?
I will not be able to attend, but as you all probably?
It's at 4:00, I think 4:00 and 12, 2:00, right?
On the 6th.
2:00 and 4:00, on October 6th.
Yeah, I, I cannot attend. I'm going to be out of town.
You said 10:00.
But as you all know, I've been to all the meetings so far this year, so I'm very comfortable with the situation and the information, so.
And you don't mind missing the road trip?
I, Dick said that he would give me a special one-on-one training on that.
We'll video it for you.
All right, so, so the consensus is that we'll have our first budget session on October 6 at 2, and we'll have a road inspection at 4 on the same day, okay? All right. And as Mr. Schwartz said earlier, the, the 28th of September would be a good time for the board to meet with the Ways and Means Committee, to get preliminary discussions with the Ways and Means Committee as we prepare for that first budget session. Okay, so that's at 7 o'clock on September 28th, and I encourage the board to attend that meeting at 7. Anything else, Steph?
That's all I have.
Okay. Supervisors, um, do you? Yeah. What? Yeah, I know, I'm going to get to that. Ms. Philo, do you have anything else you want to add?
Yeah, I have another traffic-related matter that I wanted to bring up the board, and this is about jake brakes. So if everybody could take one of these, it's just additional articles, and I'm sorry, I just copied these a little bit earlier, this one for everybody here. One of the things that has come to my attention in just reading a lot of the different articles that have been in the paper recently, coming out of like Bristol and Yardley, is these communities have been making sure that residents are protected from noise pollution from tractor-trailers that have what are called brake retarders, or jake brakes. And what these brakes are, is they're almost, they act almost like a compression to slow the vehicle down, which is nice, we want our vehicle to slow down. The cost is a little bit cheaper to the driver for the actual price of the brake. The problem is, is that the noise they make literally sounds like explosions going off in a constant fashion until they come to a stop. My concern, and just driving around here with all the different things we've got going on, is that with the 202 parkway coming in, with the potential grasso development, whatever that may be, that we have a lot of potential for this type of problem to happen. Other communities have taken a proactive step, such as Marshall Township, Yardley, and Mooresville, to put a ban on these so that trucks can't use them, and it basically is kind of saving that, that noise from our residents from hearing it. And we do have the parkway that's going through some of our neighborhoods, and then the other, if the grasso property does get developed as an industrial site, you know, the potential for increased tractor-trailer traffic is something that I think requires us to take a proactive step in banning these type of brakes. I wanted to see if we can go ahead and have our manager take a look at this and contact PennDOT to see if this is something that we can do within our community, especially on, like, 202, Route 313, the York Road, 611 area?
If we have a?
Do our township roads? I don't think we can do? Well, we can do our township roads, but we can request from PennDOT to have permission so that the PennDOT roads are done as well, and, and that's what I wanted us to do today. If we can go ahead and do that, we might even be able to coordinate with Buckingham and with, I guess it would be Warrington, is that where?
Who enforces that? Our police then?
Yes.
You might, Newtown Township has had a similar ordinance for, I guess, six or eight years now. I would suggest that you contact the police department, because they had some difficulties with enforcement, because some of the newer trucks, you have these brakes as standard. So there's some issues as far as enforcement.
Well, it would be interesting?
We need to look into it further and talk to the, I guess Chief Pasqualini in Newtown can give you more of the details.
Yeah, and that's what I wanted to start us. I didn't want to go ahead and say, hey, let's put this into plan here, because we haven't researched fully, but I know in what I've done on my research is that you have three communities, and now the fourth with Newtown that are doing this.
I believe Delverboro, 22, Chris.
Right. So it?
I, I, I would like to suggest, we have a multiple municipality truck, truck traffic, truck safety team, that they weigh the trucks and they go through the safety equipment for the trucks. How about if we have our representatives on there, which is Sergeant Don Lawson and Officer Matt Herschewitz, not only contact Newtown, but to look into the matter of the jake brakes, and I'll make a report back to the board within a month.
That would be great.
Of what?
Because what I, what I want to prevent is, you know, just like we had with our, incident with our billboard, when we, we didn't have a billboard ordinance, billboards came up, and then we are retroactively looking at this. You know, we have the opportunity within the next month or two to be able to have this in place before we have the opening of the 202 parkway, to go ahead and, and take a look at this, so I would appreciate that, Chief.
I'll take care of it.
Anything else?
That was it. Thank you so much.
Rick?
Starting in October, our Board of Supervisors meeting will be streamed, so you'll be able to get them via the internet, which is a huge technological jump. So, looking forward to that, and hopefully, that'll be up and running without too many problems in October. And also, one thing that the chairman may be thrilled to find out, that part of that is, it's a modulation of my voice too. It will automatically increase my voice and automatically decrease my voice.
Fabulous.
So, that would help the rest of the board members when I speak in a low, quiet?
Is there a fly swatter to come and swat your hand away from your mouth there?
If you go to the TAB meetings, they probably do. They are excellent.
I hear him just fine over here.
As you know, Oktoberfest was, it's waving to us.
Answering to that.
Oktoberfest was, was an interesting time, and I thanked the staff in the parking wreck for doing, jumping through a lot of hoops, but I'm sure someone will talk about that later. Last comment is the trash survey. If you haven't done the trash survey online or in pencil, if you would please take a minute or two, it takes two minutes, do that. You can go to our website, and the survey's right there, you hit the button and you're done. And I have a feeling that if I ask for hands raised, and maybe even on the board, whether it be 100%, so hopefully next month, if I ask that question, everybody will be able to raise their hand and be 100%.
Thank you.
That's it.
Ms. Eisenhardt, do you want to do your?
Yes, thank you.
Proposal for the Growing Green?
Yes. I was actually contacted by one of the Pennsylvania environmental groups, and it's a citizen-based environmental advocacy group, and they work to protect the natural heritage that makes Pennsylvania so great. One of the best programs that helps local communities protect their waterways and open spaces called Growing Greener, and in fact, Growing Greener has directly benefited Doylestown Township by providing funding to improve our stormwater management. Unfortunately, this great program is going to be out of money soon and is set to expire. So they've been asking some township supervisors and borough council people if they would be willing to share a template of a sample resolution that the township might support so that we could ask our state legislators to renew and fund the Growing Greener initiative. So far, over 40 townships have signed on, and I would like to be a representative from Doylestown Township that would suggest that the board review the template for the resolution so that we could ask our state legislators to renew the Growing Greener grant money, so that we could also benefit again from some of the wonderful things we were able to do with the money in the past. So I did share the sample resolution with the rest of the board, and I'm hoping that, I don't know if we could?
What we do, what we'll do now, I would suggest, if you will, is we ask the staff to create the template and have it, you know, run it by maybe, I, I think it's fine the way it is, but tailor for Doylestown Township, and we'll consider it our next meeting.
That's what I would love for you to do. I don't know if we need a motion for it, or if just consensus works?
We'll move on it the next time, I would think, yes?
Yeah, I would note that the Bucks County Conservation District, and I'm the chairman of the board, adopted a similar resolution this month in favor of Growing Greener.
And I would also just like to add that they did send me a list of all the municipalities and counties throughout Pennsylvania that have already signed on, and as of the date they sent this to me, which was just September 13th, there was no one in Bucks County at that point that had signed on. So I would be very proud for Doylestown to be the leader in this area and to take the initiative, and hopefully?
I think the borough has.
It's, it's not as of September 13th, they haven't. But I would love for other municipalities throughout Bucks County and throughout Pennsylvania to do the same thing, but I think that we lead by example, so if Doylestown would consider doing that, that would be great.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Paul?
No, that was it, thank you.
Paul? Yes, I have a couple of things. Madam Chairman, you mentioned about the leave and yard waste at Central Park. I just want to make a, a comment about that. It's coming from Delvaux College. We've been at Delvaux College for the last several years with our Leave and Yard Waste program. We're now bringing it down to, to Central Parks, which will be more convenient probably for the township to handle. I just want to make you aware so people don't end up going up to Delvaux College to take their leave and yard waste, now they come to Central Park. So I just want to make that specific difference. And then secondly, you know, we've had a lot of rain. I don't have to tell you all about the flooding in the township. I've had a lot of calls from a lot of residents who have had problems with water drainage and so forth off the streets, et cetera, et cetera, and it's something I think we have to start taking a look at in different neighborhoods where we've had extreme rain. I know that probably this is the 100-year flood that we've had, but there are a lot of situations where the way that the geography of the land, it just creates the water coming down the roads and running, and certain people's property and down in their basement, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's something we have to start taking a look at, and I know I've talked to Dick John about this, and the road department, there's certain things they can do to accomplish this, so I think it's something that I'd like to be very involved in, to try to make sure that we don't have reoccurrences of this. We understand we're going to have another three or four days of rain. I hope it's not going to be like what we had in the, in the past, but it's something we have to consider, so I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board. It's something I would like to see us get involved in.
Well, following up on what Tom said, and I think our road crew and Dick John's department has done a great job in, in keeping the, the waters flowing and the, and the systems open, but in the neighborhoods, please check your drains. Go down, go down the corner, make sure they're clear, because we can help do this. We can help keep our drains clear, we can move the, the leaves and the debris, and if you see a real difficult situation, call the township building, call, and speak to our road crew, and they'll be right out. So don't let things gather, materials and waste gather in these, in these culverts, because it just, we can, we can prevent a lot of, of this flooding, perhaps. I have, is there anything else, Mr. Scarborough? Anything else?
No, that'd be all.
The?
And Bigler has something.
I have a question. I guess you've been seeing in the paper about black walnut trees and about leaves and branches and whatever. Is the township doing anything to make sure people aren't bringing black walnut branches, leaves, whatever to our...
Well, I don't know that we have a distinguished difference between... I don't think our... probably our people who are there receiving this, right, Dick? I mean, he could answer better with maybe even knowing what the black walnut is. I mean, that might be a problem.
Answer your question. We have not done any training in that matter.
I guess you saw in Doylestown where the walnut tree came down, they're only allowed to take the trunk of the tree, the leaves and branches.
I read an article about that, yes.
...federal places around that have taken leaves in the past that were having problems with their mulch because of it.
Yeah, that's... It is a major problem, so...
Well, Bucks County is quarantined, right?
Yeah.
For one thing, so...
Yep.
But I just wondered if the EAC was looking at it.
It's something we should certainly consider because most of the people who work and receive the yard waste are basically volunteers.
Correct.
In most cases, I don't think they are aware of it, nor I don't even know if we have a road crew. We normally have a road crew person there assisting us, whether they would even be aware of it. So it's something... I appreciate that because I don't... It's something we probably wouldn't even have thought of.
Thank you. Okay, I have a couple of things. Doylestown Borough is going to be celebrating the bicentennial of the location of the county seat to Doylestown Borough, and that celebration's going to occur in the spring 2012. They're going to kick off with the Memorial Day Parade and it's going to go for a week. There are going to be dozens of celebrations, commemorations, pageants, what?
Is that a long parade?
Parade parade. No, it's going to keep off with it. Not the parade, but the celebration's going to go on for a week. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to start my retirement early. I apologize.
You've got to get in shape for that parade.
Yeah. Well, it's going to be lots of things going on. And one of the events the folks over in the borough are talking about is perhaps some concert here in our park. So we're going to be coordinating... We're going to be working with the borough on the celebration. The other thing that we're mindful of is that we're also lead host for the kickoff or opening or ribbon cutting for the Parkway, which will occur about the same time. So there may be some necessity to coordinate major events during that period of time. Stay tuned. You may know or you may not know, I know Lee Schwartz knows, is that we have not had a police contract in 2011. Our police contract expired in December 30... On December 31st, 2010. We have been negotiating, we had negotiated with the police until just today. Their police contract went to arbitration. It was held in this room. We felt very strongly that... It's the first time, by the way, that Doylestown Township has gone to arbitration in police matters. Stephanie Mason and Ken Wallace, our finance director, presented a very good position, a very good case for Doylestown Township. We have representation from folks who specialize in this kind of material. And we felt very strongly as a board that we needed to hold the line on the escalating costs of, you know, not all municipal services, including police. It's very simple. We want contributions on their pension, we want contributions on the healthcare. No more or no less than what we ask of our residents or of our other municipal workers. So that being said, we won't get a decision anytime soon because it's in the hands of the arbitrator, the neutral, but we will keep you posted. Okay? And moving on with the rest of the agenda, we... Next item on the is a public hearing regarding issuance from Perkasy Borough Industrial Development Authority for funding for the construction of Temple Judea. Representative from Perkasy Borough here?
Let me give the board a little background. In the past, we have approved similar resolutions for the hospital and other nonprofit organizations. And this is a result of legislation changing the Internal Revenue Code because years ago, when people did this government-supported financing with tax-free interest, they did things like used it for dirty bookstores and things like that. So Congress decided that it was being abused, so it now requires that persons that wish to take advantage of tax-free financing, which is nonprofits and other qualified entities, must advise the local municipality, the Doylestown Township in this case, or the county of Bucks, and say, "We're doing this and we just need you to acknowledge that there is a public and nonprofit purpose so you avoid the dirty bookstores and the other things that were fashionable many years ago." This has been advertised...
Still not...
Well, not for public financing, they're not fashionable. But the board, on behalf of the township, makes no commitments. You have no financial obligation. It does not affect any of the zoning issues, doesn't affect any building permit issues. It affects nothing in the fact that you acknowledge that the Internal Revenue Code purposes that this is a nonprofit organization and therefore they can proceed with their financing to construct their building. Like I mentioned, there's no liability apart of the township, doesn't affect zoning, land development, or anything like that at all. It just is a financing mechanism. Have I said it correctly?
Stole my thunder. That was the best part of the presentation.
And you are?
I am Kim Fremeth here from Fox Rothschild on behalf of the Perkasy Borough Industrial Development Authority. And I can tell you a little bit about the project if you want a little bit of background.
I'm guessing the board probably knows all about the project.
Right. You probably know more than I do.
So do you need a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. A second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
Is there a cost, a financial cost for us to...
Absolutely nothing.
Nothing? I thought there was with the hospital.
Nothing. We didn't pay any from the hospital either.
Okay. Wow.
Yes, sir.
Can I clarify this? I don't understand what this is about.
Well, let me go back again. There are certain industrial development entities that exist in Bucks County. There's the Bucks County Industrial Development Authority, there's the Perkasy Borough Authority, there's a Telford Authority, there's a Lower Southampton Township Authority, there's a Langhorne Borough Education and Industrial Authority. They're entities of the Commonwealth. And if you have a qualifying project, either it's you're doing industrial project, you're going to have jobs, or you're a nonprofit like the Doylestown Hospital or whatever, you can apply to this agency to be the conduit for funds. In other words, you actually have a commitment from a bank. The bank lends money to the authority, the authority lends money to you, you do your project. Because the authority effectively is in the chain, the interest that is paid back to the lender is tax-free. So what's happening here is, not being the hospital, it's Temple Judea who are using this permitted vehicle for financing to get tax-free financing for the projects, they pay less money to the bank as far as their lending costs.
So this is not taxpayer dollars?
No, it's not taxpayer dollars. No. It's all lender dollars, but at a more attractive interest rate to Temple Judea.
Is there any other public comment or question? We have a motion and a second. I'm calling the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Yes? Five and O. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
The next item was the abled consideration of the amendments to the uniform pension ordinance to make the contributions that the police, we thought were going to make pre-tax. But since they haven't approved the agreement, I would let this ordinance lapse until we see what happens with the arbitration.
Makes sense.
So we'll take no action. We don't need to do anything else.
Okay.
That's all I have for the moment.
All right. Bring something up under... I'm not sure where it falls.
Yeah, you can... Go ahead.
If there's any chance that we could move the podium back a few feet, it's a terrible thing to be sitting in this seat and I can only see half the people in the audience. And I know that part of it is set up so...
We can do that right now, I guess.
That would be a wonderful thing. And I apologize to the people that are sitting behind the podium, but at every meeting, I can only see half the audience.
They might be happy about it.
I was going to say, they might be thrilled.
Can we just leave it in line for Mr. Binger or...
Yeah, I was just... That was a request, that was a personal request of Mr. Binger to have that positioned that way. I just want to let you know. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And my apologies to the people that I've been speaking to that I couldn't see your face. That makes me feel better. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, and we're passing on the municipal... Sorry. Friends of Dog Park?
No, you have to do the MMOs.
So we are passing on it. 2012 financial requirement of the municipal. Minimum municipal.
You don't need to take action. This is just, you need to acknowledge having been advised as to what your 2012 estimate for your MMO on pension obligations is. You just have to acknowledge receipt.
Okay. Need a motion to that?
Yeah, that'd be a good idea for the...
I'm moved to...
I'm moved that we make a motion to what my...
Acknowledge receipt of the MMOs.
Second.
It's for both plans. The one that we'll acknowledge for the police will be the one that does not include the contributions at the present time.
Okay, just a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Friends of Dog Park require... They're requesting a permit fee waiver. Mrs. Eisenhardt, I give you speaking points on this because it was your idea that we have a policy regarding this and your policy... And under that policy, you would say that this should be denied, this request. That's correct. I'd like to know, just out of curiosity, what the amount is that they're requesting? What would be their...
Eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Right on the list, right here.
Yeah. I just was curious. But it's... The reason that I brought it up previously is because we had nonprofits coming in from everywhere. And I just think that it... I thought at the time and I think now that it's... We have to clarify and draw the line in the sand, unfortunately, between stuff that has to do with the health, safety, and welfare, like EMS, fire, police, and hospital. So it would be my recommendation under those previous... That previous protocol that their permit fee waiver be denied.
I just have a question on this because I guess I'm going to take an opposite viewpoint in the sense of, I'm wondering, and I would argue that things that happen within our park system fall within the welfare of our community. And meaning the... Our welfare to have activities of enjoyment so that we have a quality of life. So I would argue that this would fall into that category. And I would be in favor of having some type of a waiver, if not maybe half of what they're requesting.
Do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
I...
Was there a motion on the...
She had a motion.
There wasn't a motion. There was a second, though.
We don't need to...
Well, you don't need to take a motion. You're not going to grant it because they have to pay. If you're going to make a... You're going to do something to give some relief or all the relief, you have to make a motion.
Well, this is the... If you want to make a motion, certainly you're entitled to do that, and I can make my comments under your motion. But I would just like to add that every cent of everything that's going on for the Doylestown Dog Park is not being done with tax dollars. It's all being done with donations. So I think that it's a wonderful thing that they're raising all this money, but I don't think because there's costs involved to the township for the permits and everything that we give them an exemption based on something that I don't personally feel is... That I would put in the same category as the hospital, the fire company, and the ambulance. And so I think it's a wonderful project. I totally support the project, but they collected the money and raised money so that they could pay all of these fees and things like that. It was included in their budgeting, and so I think that they should pay the fees because they don't meet the other criteria.
Well, I would like to make a motion that since... I would make a motion that the Doylestown Dog Park request for the waiver of these permit fees does fall within our reading of welfare, of the health, safety, and welfare of our residents, and that they would be entitled to some relief as to the permit fees. And I would suggest that that relief be what, 460 dollars? What's... What do we got? Half of what... Of 859.
It's 430.
430. That's my motion.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion fails. We want a second. Okay, moving on. Police regional consolidation letter of intent resolution. As someone else pointed out earlier, the five municipalities, Doylestown Township, Borough, New Britton Township and Borough, and Plumstead Township are now in discussions with regard to forming a formation of a regional police department. And we need another study, and this is that... A resolution authorizing us to enter into a letter of intent for that study with the Department of Community and Economic Development. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments, discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item, Pine Run Development Agreement.
The next... The board will recall that several months ago, the board approved as a final plan certain modifications to the units at Pine Run to provide a sunroom. And this is the development agreement to cover the construction activities for the sunrooms, and I would request that the board approve the agreement.
Move for approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And Oktoberfest... Pardon?
You can skip it.
Yeah, we're going to skip that. But I just wanted to comment that they... The folks at Reithoff Organization were going to try and squeeze in another week because their first, whatever, 10 days were rained out, but they saw the weather approaching and decided they weren't even going to bother. So we had a... We were going to give them an increase in their time, but they said, "Thank you, but no thank you. We'll talk to you next year."
And how... Let me just... I've been by it now, I really haven't. How did it turn out? Do we have attendance?
I think that... No, I think the attendance was weak. There was weather, there was a lot of mud from the rain. I think it was difficult...
How about the last couple of days before the...
Marginal.
Yeah.
Friday night was well-attended and Saturday. And I was there Saturday night, it was very well-attended. Sunday was very slow. Thursday was not at all because it was raining. Tuesday and Wednesday were slow.
Well, the other question I have is bringing back that area to its... The way it was. I mean, it was muddy, it was plywood put down. You look at it and you say, "My God." They're going to pay for that, right?
Yes, they are. And we have a bond. They posted a bond with the township.
That's what I just wanted to make.
Yeah, they posted a bond with the township. They've actually had some local farmers speak. They were working very closely with... Helping them as well, so...
Okay. Ken, done?
Question?
Yes, Jeff.
Ms. Patterson.
Come up to the microphone, please. They already did. They brought cash in and they paid.
They paid the 50?
Absolutely. Deposited in the bank yesterday. Chief was my escort.
Is that your question, Mr. Schwartz? Okay, good. We want a tight ship here.
They were men of their word. I will have to say that. They were very nice to work with. They were men of their word, and they did reimburse...
So were we.
Yes, as are women... Men and women of our word as well.
All right. Master caster agreement, the casting agreement from PennDOT.
Um, Dick?
Dick, do you want to speak to that?
Basically, when PennDOT conducts a project that may require them to be involved with facilities that are owned by the township or the township authority, they ask you if you want them to do the raising, the manholes and things like that. And usually it makes sense for them to do that, and this is just setting forth the process and the cost to do that. It's a common agreement, all municipalities and authorities usually do so with PennDOT. I think it's fair to say that Mr. John would recommend the board adopt the agreement.
Is that true?
That's true.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll move that we pass that.
You need my mouthpiece?
Second. I believe there was a motion and a second, right?
Yes, there is.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And then the signal, traffic signal, PennDOT agreement.
Can you do the same thing, Jeff?
I don't know what signal we're talking about, so I...
Actually, we're talking about all the signals.
Variety of signals.
It's a variety of signals, most of which we already do. And this just sets forth that we, as the political subdivision of the state, and this has to do with a lot of the signals that we do, 202, 611, 202, the new ones that are also coming with the... Such as Lower State Road and Interchange. But this requires us to, once signals are installed by either developer or PennDOT in this case, as well as those already existing, that we will maintain them as we already do. do, so.
Is there a motion to approve the agreement that we...
Question with regard to this? The signal that is at New Britton Road and Lower State, I guess? Not, not Lower State.
Yeah, Lower State.
Is that the SR 6202, do you know, and Lower State Road?
You mean the number?
On this list, yeah. Do we know? Because I, I've gotten a number of complaints about that.
It's temporary, isn't it?
Well, see, this is the thing. It's supposed to be a temporary, and it's set up to look like it's a permanent. And the thing that, within this agreement, if that is, if that is State Route 6202...
No, it's not. And New Britton Road and Lower State are not listed here.
Well, they had to maintain temporaries.
Okay, because of my concern was, is that the first...
The 202 and Lower State one is going to be...
Put in.
That's going to be permanent.
Okay.
Because that's where the Parkway is.
Okay. My concern was, they say here in, in the first paragraph, you know, whereas the need for traffic signals following the locations have, has been found to be warranted, that particular traffic signal, I mean, with the, the one that was, there was never a traffic signal there. Everybody just kind of just went, and it was fine. I don't agree that that one was warranted. So I just wanted to make sure that that was not within this area here, and I just wanted to find out what...
And it's not listed, yeah, no.
But I have no problem with this.
Where were we? Motioned, sent?
We need a motion.
Had not called? We need a motion.
We need a motion.
We have a motion, you need to vote.
Is there a second?
Who moved?
Mrs. Eisenhardt moved it.
I moved to pass it.
And who was the second?
I thought that Mr. Scarborough...
Was there a second?
Mr. Scarborough said it.
Yes. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Land Development Plan Review Extension, York and Swamp Associates.
At the meeting that was supposed to be held, the planning commission meeting on August 22nd, they had provided a letter indicating the applicant, provided a letter, sorry, that they would provide an extension to the township, however, they were not specific. And Mr. Garten and I discussed that we needed something to be specific regarding any extension. Their current plan expires October 23rd, so they're still within their 90-day clock. I asked their attorney in response to their letter that that was not going to be considered a request for an extension, that he needed to be specific. He then submitted a letter that we could now review that provided a specific 90-day waiver, which would take you from October 23rd to January 21st or thereabouts, if my math is correct.
I have a question about these extensions.
This is the first.
But I just...
We need your question.
I'm sure you do. But I just wanted, for the record, to remind everyone that there are deadlines and a total number of extensions that they're allowed to have, and we will closely monitor all that because there are timeframes that they have to stay within, and there's only a number of times that they can come back and ask for extensions. So I'd just like to stay on top of that.
Is there a motion to allow the extension, approve the extension?
Before you vote on that, could I ask you a question?
Just ask.
What happens if we didn't have planned, if we didn't approve the...
Well, nothing would happen tonight, but you would have to deny or approve the application by October 23rd. And you remember what I said to you earlier tonight? The same thing would apply because you have an obligation of the law to engage in a dialogue with an applicant.
Okay, just asking.
For these extensions, just for my clarification here, are you allowed to just ask for an extension without having a full purpose?
I think...
I don't know if this letter really, to me, gave any purpose other than everybody just asked for an extension.
The, most of your extension letters don't include a purpose. I understand that they were responding to the comments from the township's, or, plan reviewers, and wanted the plans to be modified to address those, is my understanding. Am I right, Stephanie?
That is correct.
So it's for that purpose that they requested this extension?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion, we extend the York and Swamp Associates' extension to January, January 2012, 90 days after the agreed-upon termination, or extension.
Do we add regretfully?
I'll second that one.
Yes, you can.
Regretfully. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay. Bids. Want to just run through these bids? Public Works, line painting, oil and water separator, street sweeping, fence post, and rails.
Is there a memorandum to that effect in your packet?
Yes.
Board can approve the words of the public bids as noted in the memorandum received from Mr. John.
Move to approve.
Second. Are these all within budget, Mr. John?
No, they're not.
They're not?
Some here are being asked to reject, so we need to be careful what we're...
Would you go over that, please?
So maybe we...
Hey, we need to break out...
We need to break them out. We need to break them out.
Break out the oil and water separator and the street sweeping. You could reject both of those as we do not have the funds in the mount bid.
Make a motion to do that now.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And the last three.